Okay, good morning and welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, October 22nd. My name is Sean Flowerday, I am Lancaster County Board Chair. With me is Vice Chair Rick Vest and Commissioners Matt Schulte, Roma Amundson, Kristi Yocum. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, please begin.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located at the wall of the rear of the hearing room. All written materials to be discussed at today's meeting can be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Printing options are available upon request. Brings us to item one, minutes, one A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on October 15th, 2024.
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. One B, approval of the minutes of the one and six year road and bridge improvement program meeting held on October 15th, 2024.
I move approval. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to item two, claims, two A, approval of the claims processed through October 18th, 2024, and on note, there is an amendment for payroll.
I would move approval of the claims processed through October 18th, 2024 and add in the payroll disbursements through October 16th, 2024.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Two B, approval of a claim to the Mediation Center at the amount of $11,472.50.
Move approval, second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
I'm staying.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item three, consent items. These are routine business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed for special discussion and consideration by Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there is an exception, these items are approved as one single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items are the approval of A, amendments to the following county contracts, C-24-0356 with Rico USA for print goods and services, C-23-0031 with ODP Business Solutions for office supplies and products, C-24-0359 with Vasa Construction for our Health Department Storage Garage, C-22-0791 with True Green LP doing business as True Green Lawn Care for the annual service of weed control and fertilization services, C-24-0753 with Thiel Geotech Incorporated for on-call material testing to add to the geotechnical exploration services for the West Rock Creek Road Bridge D-203, and C-19-0108 with Civic Plus LSE for additional services on the county website, Design Contract 18-199, B, a right-of-way contract with Joel P. McLafferty, North 162nd Street and Highway 34, at the amount of $1,144. Finally, C, receive and place and file the mileage reimbursement report.
I'd move approval of the consent items, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to new business, item four, four A, request for an exceptional circumstance award under Personnel Rule 17.9B for Kristi Post, payroll specialist from the County Clerk's Office for a one-step pay increase.
Good afternoon Commissioners, Matt Hanson, Lancaster County Clerk. On note, Kristi Post is coming up, as well as her supervisor Greg Thorpe. Greg is the one who initially approached me about recommending Kristi, and I couldn't agree enough. You have my written comments, but she's been an asset to our office ever since I've joined with her expertise and willingness to be involved in her variety of projects. That'll turn it over to Greg if you have anything to add.
Yeah, hi. Good morning, Greg Thorpe, Payroll Administrator for Lancaster County. I just want to add to what Matt said, a perfect employee for payroll. She always wants to take on extra tasks that are needed to do, get everybody paid, any audits that are, come up to my desk, I have her work on and get those through to get everybody, you know, paid correctly, and, and she does perfect work for the time that she's been here.
I would move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? I think it's obviously well-deserved, Kristi, you know, your supervisor's here, speaking on your behalf on this, and I think it makes a lot of sense, and so, thank you for your work and thank you for everything you've done for Lancaster County.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four B, an addendum to the 2024-2026 bargaining agreement with the Lancaster County Deputy Sheriff's Association Fraternal Order of Police Lodge 29, under county contract, C-24-0777 in the matter of a referral bonus program.
Good morning Lancaster County Sheriff Terry Wager. The reason this is before you and the reason we need an addendum to the contract is, a year ago or so, the county board passed a resolution providing for the same incentives and referrals. That, that resolution got incorporated into the Personnel Rules and Regulations. Deputy sheriffs are exempt from the Personnel Rules and Regulations, they're unclassified by statute from those, so that effectively eliminated them from the referral, and that's why the additional addendum to their contract is required.
One of the challenges is, is keeping your, your department staff with high-quality individuals, because the challenges are very unique.
And this does really help, it is a good incentive.
That was the goal, so I would move approval.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Excuse me, Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four C, a sub-recipient grant adjustment agreement with the Nebraska Emergency Management Agency to accept a federal management grant award for the 2024 Emergency Management Performance Grant to receive an additional $58,044.27 in funds.
Good morning, this is the Emergency Management Performance Grant, it's federal money administered by the state at the local level. All the counties in the state are eligible to apply, and awards are based on the number of applicants and the amount of EMPG money available.
I move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four D, agreement with Sinclair Hill Architects to conduct a facility needs assessment and concept designs with the Lancaster County Youth Services Center. Cost to the county is $73,675.
Good morning Commissioners, Karen Peters, Southern Director of Facilities and Property. This is the agreement, good morning. Agreement with the architectural services, that's going to take a look at our, look at our facility, do a kind of a deep dive, study what our needs are, assessment of the building envelope. There's a lot of deliverables in here, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you would have.
We talked-
I'm glad we're getting this done.
Yeah, no, this is an important step, and we've talked about this on several occasions with both you and Brad, and just really important that, once we take on a facility like this, that we do it the right way, and I know we've made a number of changes since Brad's arrival, and this is the next step in continuing to do what we need to do as a county to provide the services that are appropriate for the people we have there. So, I, I don't have any questions, I guess, you know, we know we've got some issues, this will tell us what our options are to address. I'm going to move approval.
I'll second that. I'll just simply say that Brad, you pointed out some very significant things that we need to modify, and so this will definitely do that, and so, that will assist greatly in the management of the youth.
And I just want to add, you know, we, I appreciate you bringing these to our attention. It's not always easy discussions when we start talking about significant challenges, but you've done a good job of making us aware of what the needs are there, and I appreciate it very much.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Item four E, an agreement with the Lutheran Family Services of Nebraska Incorporated to provide nurturing fathers' educational workshops to assist Lancaster County Department of Corrections inmates returning to the community. There is no cost to the county.
Good morning, Maria Hatfield, reentry and rehail belocation administrator with the jail. This is agreements with Lutheran Family Services to bring in their nurturing fathers' class as part of their Fatherhood Initiative programming funds. It's a 13-session class that focuses on the skills for male nurturance. The class topics are creating safe and nurtured families, positive discipline tools, effective family communication, conflict resolution, problem solving, and teamwork in family life. So, we plan to do it in the six and a half weeks, so that hopefully individuals be able to complete the course before they get released from the facility. And then they do get case management programming afterwards that they can follow up with at Lutheran Family Services, so.
This is all going to be conducted in, while they're serving their sentence, in the jail.
Absolutely, yes.
It's not the same program as Inside Out Dads that the state does, but it's sort of, it's similar, and it's, this kind of programming, I think, has, has really good track record and success, I like it a lot.
Is this part of the so-called stepping up program?
No, this is a little bit different, but we're not going to focus just on the individuals with mental health or substance abuse, this would be for all individuals that are sentenced and returning to the community. Based on their staffing, we're going to start with one course right now, and then they're in the middle of hiring some more individuals, so then we can do two courses at once.
Well, it's great to have that case management follow-up as well. I would move approval.
Second then.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just really appreciate you bringing this to us and putting this in place, because the role of fathers in families is very, very important, and the role of healthy fathers in particular, helping people who maybe never had that modeled to them, giving them a better toolkit to deal with that responsibility is just invaluable, so thank you so much for doing this.
Absolutely.
Very good. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Four F, a contract with Jones Automotive Incorporated for the annual service and supply and installation of emergency equipment for city and county law enforcement vehicles. Cost to the county shall not exceed $200,000.
Lancaster County Sheriff Terry Wager, I'd just answer any questions you might have. This is a contract we've had with Jones for a number of years now to outfit our, our patrol units, so if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Maybe just one clarification, it says equipment for city and county law enforcement vehicles.
Yes.
The county's not paying for city vehicles.
No, no, they pay for theirs, we pay for ours, it's just a, it's kind of a joint contract, and I guess you'd have to refer to the attorneys how that works out, but it's, yeah, we're not paying for theirs.
Okay, great, thanks for that clarification.
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four G, contract with K2 Real Estate Development, doing business as K2 Construction for replacement of county bridge F-181. Cost to the county is not to exceed $1,635,546.35.
Morning, I'm Mike Brechner, I'm the bridge engineer for the county. I can put this up, show you the location if you-
Yeah, just give it a second, it'll come up. There you go.
All right, that works pretty good. Northwest to the top, it's just below Raymond, this is the F-181 bridge, and it's Waverly and 40th, northwest 40th. We did come in well below the engineer's estimate, and it came in about $757,000 lower. It was very competitive, and bids are continuing to be competitive, so we're really moving forward with-
Yeah, let's get them out, please, yeah. You've seen it both ways, I like this better.
Yeah.
Yep. Are there any questions, concerns?
Just when, do you know when construction will start?
It, it's supposed to start in the spring, and we have quite a few other projects kind of pushing and starting right now, so that we can get that in the spring, and we have quite a few, few projects kind of already stacked up, and spending is around already $4 million, I think, on bridge projects for the 25, kind of fiscal, fiscal spending season, and I think there's probably some room for some more spending and some more projects in the spring as we bid out the D-203 and some, some other projects that came up as an emergency.
It's good to see this moving forward, I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Turn it over to this one.
Thank you.
Please call the roll.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to four H, a recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to award and execute a purchase order to John Thomas Incorporated for temporary traffic signals in the amount of $55,615.
Good morning Commissioners, Ryan Shaw, Lancaster County Engineering Facilities and Fleet Manager. This is for some temporary traffic lights, I'm sure you've probably seen them around the city of Lincoln here. Right now, we currently have flaggers that are out on many of our roads here, we feel that by putting these temporary traffic signals, this will take some of our people out of the line of fire with some of the drivers we have on some of these higher-volume traffic roads. They're programmable and they set up pretty quick, so we feel it'd be an asset to the county.
I move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Brings us to four I, a recommendation from the purchasing agent on behalf of the county engineer to order a contract to Midwest Petroleum Equipment for Fuel and Fluid Dispensing Management System Service, a total amount of $57,992.45.
Good morning, Ryan Shaw again. This is for our Cherry Creek property and upgrading some of the fuel stuff there. Currently, we found that we have an issue with some of the underground conduits that run to our tank gauges, they've rusted out, and they fill with groundwater, which is getting water up into our tank gauges there, and they've got some explosion-proof housings, and they're shorting the electronics out, so we're having issues trying to figure out how much fuel we actually have, and Midwest Petroleum's been about seven or eight times in the last six months to try to rectify the problem, and it's just a time to move forward and update some of our stuff while we're at it. The current gauges that we have now are not serviceable, they're custom order as they're, everything's moving forward with technology, so this will take care of this for us.
So, this would replace the entire system then, Ryan, is that what we're talking about now?
So, currently, the, there's a box on the outside of the building there, and there's pipes that run down underneath that go to the actual gauges on the tanks, units themselves, those pipes are rusted out, so we're going to replace those pipes, well, the conduits, along with the wiring and the hardware for the actual gauges, will go to an ultrasonic-type gauge instead of a float gauge, and of course, all the corresponding hardware and software that goes along with those. It's also updatable, so in the future, if we move forward with our different district shops, it can integrate with those, and we could actually get fuel readings from all of those shops in the future, it has that capability, so I think it'd be a great asset in the future moving forward, it's a great building block for us.
Yeah, oh man, that seems like a really great move to me, I move approval.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you Commissioners.
Four J, a grant contract with the First Rural Fire District for the purpose of procuring interoperable handheld communication devices utilized by Lancaster County Rural Fire Districts. The county would utilize American Rescue Plan Act funds in the amount not to exceed
Move approval.
I'll second that.
Really long process to get here, but I appreciate the hard work of those from this side and from the rural firefighter side, who worked so hard to come up with the best solution available to us at this time.
I was going to say, it was a long process for you.
Not me, prove so much, I don't think I, I sit on this side.
Right, right.
I'm looking at you, man.
No, you said it right, you said it right, you said it right. No, I'm glad, I'm glad we're here, it doesn't solve the whole problem we were trying to solve, but I do think it's an important step in the right direction, so.
Exactly, it's, it's an important step forward.
Well, and we've seen over the last week or so how important it is to have a rural fire that can respond quickly and be informed quickly about issues that are popping up, and so-
No question.
Replacing these devices, these pagers, that's the word, thank you, these pagers, the whole pager system across the county to help them out, I think is a good use of ARPA dollars. Like you guys said, we recognize that this isn't the full solution, because many radios still need to be replaced, and we need a updated radio system as a whole. The dollar amount on that just far exceeded what we're able to do in ARPA, so we're glad that we can at least play this part to improve communications in the county.
And it definitely furthers the goal, I totally agree, it furthers the goal of what we were trying to improve with these dollars initially when we set them aside, so, no, it's a good first step, so. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Motion carries. Four K, and the adoption of the 2025 Lancaster County Legislative Priorities.
Okay, this is you, right?
Yeah.
Do you want to, can we throw this up on the-
Yeah, here's an extra copy right here.
Cool. Can you kind of walk us through it?
Sure, as we talked about these priorities last week, I pointed out that I feel like the way we reworded property tax relief ended up making that there's only-
Can we zoom in a little?
-two solutions. Our solutions were, according to the way I read it, was inheritance tax and fees. I think, as we discussed it, there was an interest in the board to remove inheritance tax, although I'd be glad to talk about inheritance tax. So, what I did is I attempted to do what we discussed, at least, that you guys would like to see, which was remove inheritance tax from proper tax relief, create a new priority, so you can see at the bottom there it says continue, and, and I will also point out that I added some wording in here that I think better captures what some of you were hoping to catch. So, it says continued support for inheritance tax as a property tax relief mechanism. Legislation that seeks to eliminate or reduce the inheritance should include dollar-for-dollar replacement funding from the state or other tax sources, so I made sure to include that, because I know that was something many of you were really interested. And then I added the second thing, which was for year, for years Lancaster County has deposited inheritance tax dollars into its general fund as a form of- general fund as a form of property tax relief. The county supports legislation that mandates this practice."
Accordingly?
Accordingly, it is of utmost importance that Lancaster County... Actually, was that supposed to be scratched off? Preserve its revenue to provide... That was actually, I think, the sentence I pulled out of the top.
Okay.
And then rewrote to this. Actually, that bottom part should not be in there.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, that was the original sentence, I believe.
So, so the new version would read, I was just gonna read it aloud. Does that work?
Sure, that's fine.
So, starting at, because there's no changes in the first two, so starting at the third paragraph, "Moreover, diversifying and expanding state and county revenue sources can reduce county's reliance on property tax to fund operations. To that end..."
Existing using...
Yeah, we just, we accidentally scratched out that E. "Existing user fees should keep pace with the cost of county services. Reasonable new user fees established..."
I...
Should be.
Are, should be. Should, did you say, should be?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Should, we need a should be.
Yeah, we need the be in there.
"Should be established for county services, and that unfunded mandates that primarily benefit the state are eliminated." I see what you, yeah.
And you're adding a paragraph?
And then, well, and then a new priority.
New priority.
Continued support for inheritance tax as a, as a property tax relief mechanism. Legislation that seeks to eliminate, to reduce the inheritance tax should include a dollar-for-dollar replacement, should include dollar-for-dollar replacement funding from the state or other tax sources. For years Lancaster County has deposited inheritance tax dollars into its general fund as a form of property tax relief. The county supports legislation that mandates this practice. I have no problem with this.
I don't either. I think it's a good rewrite.
Couple of...
And it does emphasize the importance of, it really does emphasize the continued importance of inheritance tax.
It's also exactly what we just said at the legislature.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. I would just question the last sentence. I mean, because we're doing it now, or we want the state to tell everybody how to spend, every 93 counties, how to spend their inheritance tax. I mean, because in the end, I think that's what they're all doing, but do we need the state to tell them?
It was a comment that was said here, and captured it here. I don't know for sure if that's our intent.
That's not our intent to say that it is mandated.
I do remember.
Sean has no problem mandating it.
Being said.
Sean has no problem having this argument with NACO.
If it preserves property or inheritance tax, I absolutely would.
It, it, I mean, fundamentally, what this is, is there, there is an eastern-western breakdown here where the eastern counties tend to use, not, and not one-for-one, but generally speaking, tend to use the inheritance tax to buy down property taxes. Western counties tend to put it into sinking funds for new equipment, bridges, that kind of stuff. And so I...
They're dealing with a very different set of, I mean, my only question is, to simplify it. That sentence says, "We support the state telling 93 counties what they're gonna do."
I 100% said last week that I would support this. This is consistent with what I said. I'm not gonna go back on it.
It's consistent with what you said. I'm not sure.
That's fine.
I'm ready to tell other counties.
You can vote me down, but I'm fine with this, so.
To Sean's point, I was just trying to capture, and Krista said it too, I was just trying to capture what was said, whether or not that's up, in general, I think our legislative priorities don't try to do that, mandate things for other counties. So I hear what you're saying, Rick. What if they did?
I, I guess, so we're proposing a revision to our standing priorities, because that's where this language is located. And it would take out the sentences at the bottom from the property tax relief, and along with the last line, and then it would add a new priority regarding inheritance tax, which I think really does clarify our position, other than my question.
I think it does clarify, clarify it. I do agree with the fact that, I don't know if we can mandate that for the entire 93 counties, because they do have their own, they have their own problems.
Right.
Yeah, and so I don't think that we can really say that you will use this.
Can we just soften it up a little bit and say that the county supports using inheritance tax to buy down property taxes?
I could do that.
That, that I would agree with.
It's a broad, generalized statement.
It's broad, general. I do agree with that.
Let me just, so I can jot that down and make sure we get it.
Supports.
Do we have someone here to testify on this?
The county supports, say that again, John.
So I, I just said, could we change it to, "The county supports using inheritance tax, inheritance tax revenues to buy down, to lower property taxes." Just full stop. We can just cut it there.
Or as property tax relief.
As property, yeah.
The county supports the use of inheritance tax as property tax relief.
Found that.
Okay.
I could support that. I mean, because ultimately, if, I'm not gonna name a county, a rural county buys a new grader.
Yeah.
They're gonna use property tax instead of buying, instead of inheritance tax. So ultimately, it does the same.
It doesn't matter. It, it, yeah, it's, it's, it's coming out of one end or the other, right? It's, it's, it doesn't matter, because it's...
I just don't want Lancaster County.
Can I trade you, Matt?
Sure. Did you get the other two little corrections, the, because we...
The B?
And the E. We accidentally struck the E in existing, and I think we want it. We don't want it to be existing.
You barely see it, but it is there.
You can barely see that.
Yeah.
I think there is no doubt about it that the number one issue when we talk to voters is property tax relief. There's, I mean, everybody hears that all the time. And so I think this rightly prioritizes and keeps that as a high number one standing priority. I personally am not a fan of inheritance tax for different reasons. I understand that the will of the board wouldn't eliminate eliminating that, so I tried my best to incorporate it a little bit better by creating, and this, this new priority is very similar to the way number five and six are written, as far as the continued support for. So I'll leave that up, and we don't, I'll just leave it at that, I guess.
Yeah. So then, so the new version then will read, "Moreover, diversifying and expanding state and county revenues, revenue sources can reduce county's reliance on property tax to fund operations. To that end, existing user fees should keep pace with the cost of county services. Reasonable new user fees should be established for county services, and that unfunded mandates that primarily benefit the state are eliminated." And then in the new priority, it would be, "Continued support for inheritance tax as a property tax relief mechanism. Legislation that seeks to eliminate or reduce the inherited tax should include dollar-for-dollar replacement funding from the state or other tax sources. For years Lancaster County has deposited inheritance tax dollars into its general form, general fund as a form of property tax relief. The, the county supports..."
Use of...
Use of inheritance tax as property tax relief.
My bad handwriting is now on display for everybody.
It's better, better than any chicken scratch I have.
One, one other, one other suggestion. Oh, excuse me. It's not just unfunded mandates, but underfunded mandates. It'd be nice if the state actually paid what they agreed to. So can we just add unfunded mandates and underfunded mandates?
Sure.
As unfunded and underfunded.
That's fine. You got it, Matt? Can you help us out? Thanks.
Unfunded and...
And underfunded.
Have that conversation, so. I would...
I think there are individuals in the room who have had conversations with me in the past about making it its own standing priority, actually.
Okay.
So.
Actually, that's not a bad idea.
Have that conversation, too.
Yeah, well, more to follow.
Yeah.
I, I, I think, I, I'm not a person who likes spur-of-the-moment things, but I think Matt has captured what we talked about, and I don't see anything in here with the adjustments we've made that I'm opposed to. So we're proposing to adopt our legislative priorities with this revision.
Sure. So I'll make a motion to adopt the legislative priorities as amended.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Yeah, I'm in support of this. This is, this is consistently everything we and I said last week, so.
And it clarifies it.
It also, it's just what we're saying, it's what we're saying when we talk to senators on the floor, like in the rotunda, too. It's just, it's just, it is, this is consistent with what we've said down there, so.
The other thing which I had never actually realized until I took the time to read this, I feel like the word "unfunded mandates" is a term that gets thrown around by counties. But this actually currently says, and I think it's good, "Unfunded mandates that primarily benefit the state." I think that's, we've faced that uniquely here in Lincoln, in Lancaster County, and I think that's...
Right.
I think that's good to keep in there as that order.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ametson?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries? All right, that brings us to public.
Can we get, because it'll be poor Dave who has to retype this up. Can we get him a copy of that's changes?
Poor Dave. He has strong shoulders.
Sure, it'll be all right.
All right, Commissioners, that brings us to item five, public comment. Members of the public wishing to speak on items relating to county business not on the agenda may do so at this time. Each speaker is limited to one appearance of up to five minutes. Now, time may not be reserved, transferred, or otherwise assigned to other speakers. These time limits may be extended or reasonably decreased at the discretion of the chair.
Robert Boer. Will you keep, yeah, thank you. First thing I want to say is that I'm, I think it's hilarious that our two highest allegedly elected lawyers in the state, and by that I'm referring to Attorney General Mike Hilders and Secretary Evnan, could get it so wrong about the voting rights of convicted felons who have paid their debt to society. Then again, they are both wrong about a lot of things. At any rate, I hope you saw that Nebraska Supreme Court decision. Moving on, your man, Todd Wilchin, recently used our tax dollars to pay to have the following message pushed out on social media, quoting, "Your vote is your business. Counting the vote is our business. Check your facts. Paid for by Lancaster County Election Commission." End quote. Now then, that is foolish talk. That is propaganda talk. That is subversive talk. That is treasonous talk. That is communist talk. That is Joseph Stalin-esque talk, because those who vote decide nothing if those who are counting the vote are corrupt. It's a self-evident truth. Those who vote decide nothing. Those who count the vote decide everything. As far as, excuse me, as far as the facts go, I checked them long ago. These are not your facts or my facts, but the facts. Our Constitution starts with, "We, the people, grateful to Almighty God for our freedom, do ordain and establish the following Declaration of Rights and frame of government as the Constitution of the state of Nebraska." We, the people. It also says, "There should be no hindrance or impediment to the right of a qualified voter to exercise the elective franchise." The elective franchise does not end with voting. It ends with counting our votes. Again, this is a self, this is self-evident on its face. Once you accept the very, the very first three words of our Constitution, "We, the people," the elective franchise belongs to we, the people. Wilchin's meme could not be further from the truth. The entire election process is the people's business, not his business. And the entire, not his business only, the entire process can be subverted by simply subverting the counting part of the process. There is absolutely no good reason for the total lack of public-facing transparency and verifiability in our counting process. None whatsoever. There are plenty of bad, subversive reasons, but no good ones. For Wilchin to say that counting the vote is his business, and by implication, not the people's business, is nothing short of political propaganda and subversion. Never mind the fact that no one in his office actually counts the votes. Rather, he farms that responsibility out to a very secretive private corporation that has a bad reputation and can easily cheat without getting caught. What Wilchin is doing, in effect, is demand, excuse me, is demanding that we trust him. He has absolutely no right to do so, and in contradistinction, we, the people, have every right to demand public-facing transparency and verifiability. Remember the motto engraved over the main entrance of our Capitol Building. The salvation of the state is watchfulness in the citizen. Watchfulness, not trust. Watchfulness presupposes transparency. Wilchin presents himself not as a public servant, but as an entitled bureaucrat with no accountability, accountability, accountability to the people. He should resign before he shoots himself in the foot any worse. Certifying an election is serious business. It is a felony to certify a fraudulent election, and he has no idea how easy it is to secretly subvert elections that use secret software and hardware. The peaceful transfer of power absolutely demands, excuse me, depends on total public-facing transparency and verifiability in our election process. And again, Wilchin should resign, and perhaps should you as well. You are in direct opposition to that great president we are named after. You appear highly resolved that the govern, that government of the people, by the people, for the people should perish from the earth. May God help you.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak?
Good morning. I'm Duane Rousher. What gets me is that, your, your citizens, are you watchful? Are you part of that watchfulness of the activities that's going on? I think like there's a lot of people, including me, that knows there's things going on, but nobody wants to take a look behind the curtain, see what's really going on with our elections, with the way that we count the votes, to know for sure that things are accurate. So do we need to have our eyes open to see what's really going on, or do we want to keep them shut to say everything's okay? What is being told to you is that our elections are accurate? I think our, we need to take a real deep look at what's really going on. There's too much, I think, fraud, but how do you know that? Because you don't have any details to see for sure what's actually going on. Why don't we have the details? Why don't we have the information that we need to? I think you should ask the, the election division to do a hand count on this next election. Have them run through their machines, then have them do an actual hand count and audit of those ballots to see for sure, you know, which ones were actually maybe copied, which ones were in some way redirected in their vote when they went through the machine. I don't, you know, the sampling that goes on is very selective. So if you sample something and you choose items that you know are gonna be okay, then you don't have a problem. But really, there is a problem. I think we need to take an honest look, what's going on, and be able to say, our eyes are open. What we're being told may not be truthful, but you don't know. So let's be honest with ourselves. What is really going on? Do you really think 100% of everything that's going on there is truthful? I just ask you, open our eyes. Let's take a look and see what's going on with the election, what's going on with the results, and get the information that's needed to actually verify the details. Your citizens, we're here asking for your help. Take a look at it.
Any other members of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none, please proceed.
Item six is announcements. Like I said...
Item six is announcements. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, October 24th, 2024, at 8:30 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, October 29th, 2024, at 9 a.m. in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can be reached at 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live at L-N-K TV. L-N-K TV is available on Allo Channel 2 and Spectrum Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit Lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. L-N-K TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Item seven is adjournment.
Move we adjourn.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Best?
Yes.
Ammison?
Yes.
Schulte?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flaherty?
Yes.
Motion carries.